Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first of two June meetings of the Hoboken Board of Education. This is the June 13th meeting. We'll start with the statement of compliance, Mr. Moffett.
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local papers on June 10, 2017, and June 11, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is a violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television, Channel 77, and FiOS Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Please come in and sit down. Everybody, I've asked, I have a young friend here in the audience, I asked to lead us in the pledge. Ron, would you please stand up? Go ahead.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Thank you. In the roll call, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancomano?
Present.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Mr. Kluftfeld?
Here.
It's time for student recognitions. Mr. Vissio?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month nominee, Leahy Yakovi. Nominated by Ms. Mangio, Leahy excels in the areas of cooperation, leadership, and attendance. She's a quintessential Brandt buddy, as she's always willing to help others and leads with her heart. Her grades are always outstanding, and she has blossomed into a discerning reader. What is your favorite book? Cat in the Hat. I love that book, too. According to Prince Rodriguez Gomez, she says that "you make her school a better place because your smile and your kindness is overbearing," but overshadowing, I'm sorry. "Her mind and heart are models for all to follow." Student achievements, she has proven herself to be one of the kindest and most respectful and overall achieving students in her class. She comes to school every day with a big smile and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She has grown so much this year, and she continues to surprise all of us with her dedication to succeed. What makes this student an asset to the Brandt community? Her ability to grow both her heart and her mind and make herself a special member of the Brandt and Hoboken communities? Your favorite quote, "I'm proud of myself; I'm also happy that my mom will be proud too. I love her because she gives me hugs, kisses, and makes me the yummiest food." What's your favorite food? Avocado, alright. Let's give Leahy a big round of applause. What a great honor to see you. You're welcome. Our Collaboral Student of the Month, Emily Cho Seag. Emily's a well-rounded student, has a bundle of energy that absorbs the knowledge around her. She's an excellent role model for her third-grade peers. Emily brings a wealth of knowledge to the classroom discussions, can often be found devouring books, and volunteering in any way possible. Her caring attitude towards classmates, combined with her willingness to learn and grow, makes Emily a wonderful example to all to follow. Emily values her education, works hard on a daily basis, and pays close attention to detail in all of her work. She values and takes ownership of her work, and nothing but her best is turned in for all of her assignments. She's consistent in completing her work assignments and doing homework as well. She leads by her positive example and her vibrant attitude for learning. Emily is also actively involved outside of school in many activities. She also played in the Peter Pan High School production, and she also participates in gymnastics, tap, jazz, plays the violin in the Collaboral Strengths Program, and is in the Collaboral Chorus, and is learning how to play the piano. That's pretty awesome. Dr. Vespiani, your building principal states, "Emily is a true scholar who takes her academics very seriously, yet balances that with involvement in several extracurricular activities. She is kind-hearted with full optimism. Her positive demeanor is a great exemplar for the school community." When asked what she loves about school, Emily stated, "I love third grade. I love it because it's challenging and fun at the same time." Her favorite subject is writing, and she loves writing because she gets to express how she feels through different writing topics that Ms. Consteigienis gives you. Your favorite special is music, because you have the opportunity to sing along, and that's one of your favorite things to do. Emily is a confident, responsible, and academic student, and she is well-deserving of the recognition of the Collaboral Mesa District Student of the Month. Keep up the amazing work and always shine and reach for the stars. Congratulations, Emily. From Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Nicholas Mungin. Though he's not in attendance, we're still going to read his honor this evening. Nicholas came to kindergarten during late November and early December of 2016. He was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Ayers, because of his conscientious behavior and his academic abilities. He was hesitant to acclimate himself to the classroom routines and activities due to this being his first school experience. With guidance and support from his peers, teachers, and parents, Nicholas began to grasp some of the concepts that he missed during the earlier parts of kindergarten. Every praise that he received from applying something learned, whether a sight word, a mathematical concept, or answering a critical thinking question, engaged Nicholas to continue trying his best in kindergarten. Nicholas also displays a positive and cheerful disposition when coming to school. Every morning, he greets his teacher, saying, "Good morning, Ms. Ayers," followed by a heartfelt compliment. Throughout the day, those compliments continue for both his peers and teachers, whether on the field trip, in the class, or outside on the playground, one can always hear Nicholas expressing his love for everything around him, including Thomas G. Connors. His positivity is infectious and a perfect addition to our school community. Dr. Pollens loves that Nicholas is always a happy student. He has the biggest smile and greets her dearly with a smile and a wave. He always shares that he loves his school and his class. Dr. Pollens visits the classroom and notices that he enjoys working in centers. When Dr. Pollens thinks of Nicholas, she thinks of the same from the Lawrence. It's not about what it is, it's about what it can become. Nicholas has become an amazing student and is very deserving of the title Student of the Month. Let's give Nicholas a big round of applause. Our recipient from the Wallace Elementary School, Sierra Centino. How are you? Are you excited? Are you stoked? Well-deserving. Sierra is a thoughtful, kind, well-mannered young lady. She strives to do her best on every assignment and has an outstanding work ethic. She's always prepared to work and does so with a great attitude. As a matter of fact, she doesn't even mind getting extra work or homework on weekends, as she'll often ask for it. She's always on task and requires no redirection. She understands what is expected of a model fourth-grader student and exceeds those expectations. She is thoughtful and considerate of all of her classmates, as well as her teachers and administrators, and is a shining example for fellow students. Nowhere were these qualities more evident than when Mr. Bartlett was appointed Vice Principal Wallace. Knowing he was new to the school, Sierra often spoke to him during lunch and asked him how his day was. That was really nice of you. Her bright smile and shining disposition often made his day. One of Sierra's greatest attributes is her curiosity and love of learning. During the fourth-grade class's recent Living Wax Museum project, Sierra portrayed Eleanor Roosevelt, an advocate for education. A quote from Mrs. Roosevelt is appropriate in describing Sierra. "I think at a child's birth, if a mother could ask a fairy godmother to endow it with the most useful gift, that gift should be curiosity. It appears the fairy godmother gave Sierra an extra helping of it." Some of Sierra's favorite things to do are reading, writing, mathematics, solving mathematical problems, rather, and jumping rope. Her after-school activities include Spanish and dance lessons in Wallace's Passport for Learning program. Most of all, Sierra also loves spending time with her family. Although it's a few years away, when Sierra graduates from high school, she wants to attend college and major in accounting to follow in her mom's footsteps. In closing, Sierra stated that she feels that she has improved a great deal this year, and if she continues to try harder, she'll succeed in more than just being Student of the Month. Congratulations, Sierra, and remember, as Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams." Don't stop believing or dreaming. Congratulations. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month recipient, Joseph Marrera. Nominated by Ms. Drumgo, she feels that Joey displayed a tremendous act of kindness on May 3, 2017. A fellow classmate left his gym bag on the bleachers in the gymnasium. When another student pointed out, Joey said he knew who belonged to and would get it to him. Joey took the gym bag, in addition to the lunch bag that was with it. He tried to find the student before the end of the day, but couldn't. So instead of leaving the belongings in an unsafe place, Joey placed them in a locker. Joey reported that he wanted to be sure nothing valuable was in the bag, so he looked in them and found a cellphone. Joey took the cellphone home with him for the night, and upon arriving back to school the following morning, Joey approached me, meaning Ms. Drumgo, at the middle school entrance doors to report that he had the student's phone. He explained what happened the day before and wanted to hand in the phone so it could be returned. That's such a model student, wouldn't you say? When Joey handed the cellphone to Ms. Drumgo, he was relieved for the student because he didn't want them to be without a loss of their cellphone. But most of all, he was super excited because he did something that was positive. Ms. Drumgo states that she could barely contain herself and gave him a big hug. She told Joey how proud of him she was for such a thoughtful act, because not all students would have been able to do as such and remember to bring every piece of the bags back to school in one piece. She says for this random act of kindness, she nominated Joseph Marrera for Student of the Month because she felt that this was such a wonderful act of kindness. At this time, we would like to praise Joseph for such a wonderful attribute and such a great kindness at the Hoboken Middle School. Ms. McPietra, if you'd like to come up as I read the valedictorians. The Hoboken High School Student of the Month is Vincent Morales. Yep. Vincent can be here with us this evening, but we wanted to praise him. He is our valedictorian. He is going to Stevens. So I'm just going to read what the school intern wrote on his behalf. Nominated by Ms. Tank, Ms. Tank said, "Vincent is a very dedicated and determined student, always polite and respectful to others. He's always punctual and class and is at task at all times. In spite of his medical challenges, Vincent has missed minimal amount of school and has always maintained high academic standards and his goals. He's an amazing student." Principal McPietra states that he's a quiet young man who knows the value of education. He has put forth so much effort toward his studies, which is why he received this honor, as well as a valedictorian for the class of 2017. He is a man of a few words, but when he speaks, people listen because he does so with respect and candor. He is also a great listener and hears his peers, teachers, and administration when they are speaking. Ms. Tank is confident with Vincent's capabilities, who will have an amazing and productive four years at Stevens and will go on to do great things in society. Vincent is a member of the National Honor Society and Harvard Model Congress. He was the manager of the boys' soccer team and a member of the math club. In his spare time, he enjoys soccer, studying, and working out. He enjoys babysitting his little sister and he tutors children at the school. As we stated earlier, Vincent will attend Stevens University in the fall, and he will be studying biomedical engineering. When notified about the award, Vincent stated that he was proud that he won the award and is excited that this was his second selection. At this time, let's give Vincent a big round of applause. We're so proud of you. That concludes this portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Vissio. I had the pleasure of sitting next to Mr. Morales, our valedictorian, at an awards dinner about two weeks ago. He's an impressive young man, and we'll all get a chance to meet him and hear him speak next week at the high school ceremony. Congratulations to all of our students tonight. Thank you for coming, and we honor you and we are so proud of you. I'm going to call for just a two-minute recess, let families leave before we resume with the hot and long business of the Board tonight. So just a two-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. The next order of business, I believe, is the committee reports, but we lead with the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson?
I think he's just going to grab the lights. So the superintendent's report, I have just a couple areas to address tonight, and because these are done in pretty distinct areas, the topics that I want to talk to the Board a bit about, you can stay here. You don't have to move. The couple slides that we have will be posted and sent to you and so on and so forth. So this is really more conversation points around a few important things that are happening around the district right now, okay? Okay. So there's some news to share in the district that I think is extremely important, and the first one is that we have entered into a number of grant programs with Stevens Institute, and they are grants that are offered through the National Science Foundation, and they are highly, highly competitive grants. And Stevens usually, when it's a grant that requires a university to partner with a high school, we have the luxury and the benefit of partnering with them on those grants. It's the percentage of time that universities actually receive those NSF grants is actually very small, but we just received notification that one of the grants that Stevens wrote that we helped to contribute to and that we will also participate in was just released that Stevens was going to be recommended for funding for that particular grant. So we're really excited about it. It's a multimedia immersion grant that will enhance STEAM education and STEM education in the district, particularly at the high school level. So what it's going to do is it's going to merge and mesh multimedia technology and television production with the area of STEAM technology. So we're very excited about that. We also, as a district, participated in an interview with the Grade Network, and the Grade Network is a new association of professionals that work with colleges and universities around the country. What they're trying to do is promote feedback among teachers to students and also professional theorists in the area of education to public school districts. And so we were recently interviewed regarding our writing program and our writing initiative in the district, both at the elementary school level and the middle school level, and they are going to highlight the district on their website in an ebook format for a best practices model and a case study. So we were interviewed, we're going to be interviewed again, and they are going to remain with us throughout the following school year to provide us with additional input and feedback on our writing program. So the next couple items, I think, are critically important because I want to not only present to the Board of Education some clarity so that you have quality talking points, but also to anyone who potentially is watching the Board of Education meeting from home, the luxury of their home, their couch, and to be able to also understand the kind of questions to ask. So we have just recently completed our preschool process, our preschool selection process, lottery process. We've also just completed our kindergarten placement process. And so what I want to do is I want to walk you through both of those processes and then give Board of Education members an opportunity to ask questions, even if it's clarifying questions, and then that will also assist me in working with HECCAC and the Director of Early Childhood Education to maybe clarify or even put out additional public relations materials regarding the process. So let me start with preschool, just so that everybody is clear. All right. So I have a screen up behind me that talks about the preschool program and the preschool lottery. Now, to provide a global picture, I think it's important for everyone to understand that obviously Hoboken has a high demand for our preschool program, and that each year, there is, some people call it a waiting list, and other people will call it a pending placement list. The district does call it a pending placement list. We currently have well, just a little over 850 seats that we are filling for preschool. It's our highest number of seats that we've had, and sometimes people ask, "How do you come up with that number, and where does that actually come from?" Well, where it comes from is the Hoboken School District is a former abbott district, and as a result of it, we're required to provide full-day preschool for three-year-olds and for four-year-olds. The code says two things. It says that former abbots must provide preschool on an age-related basis, which is three and four, and then it also says that there is an income eligibility component to preschool as well. And I do want to explain that because sometimes that brings up questions as well. So we have what you call universal preschool, and sometimes people take the term "universal" and think that that actually means that it's for every single three- and four-year-old that live within the city. But actually, what the term "universe" means is that is the number that the New Jersey Department of Education calculates using a formula that they have developed and that they provide to the district. So what is that formula? Well, the formula is a formula that's calculated by the October 15 enrollment of first-grade children, the year before September begins. So for example, for the upcoming 17, 18 school year, the Department of Education takes our October 15 enrollment from 2016 and multiplies the first-grade enrollment by two. And when they multiply that first-grade enrollment by two, they come up with what's called a universe, and they give us that number. The code then further says we are required, as a school district, to seat 90% of that universe. So 90% of our total universe, and our universe runs right around 490 students, you can see what 90% of that is, and we're seating close to, or just now, over 850. So how is that possible? So some people think that the school district is actually utilizing its budget, its Fund 11 or Fund 15 blended funds to fund the additional seats, but that's not actually accurate. What has happened is because of Hoboken's increasing population and the demand for preschool, each year our Department of Special Services goes to Trenton and they ask for, in their preschool plan, additional funding and additional classes. The Department of Education, over the last five years, consistently has provided Hoboken with additional classrooms, and as a result of those additional classrooms, they provide us with funding above and beyond our universe. The other former abbott districts in the state of New Jersey are not receiving those additional funds. We are because of our demand. So we're funded well over 150% of our universe, while other former abbott districts are not yet filling all of their universe seats. So we do benefit from the ability to seat as many preschool students as we can. We are seating as many children as we are being funded for. So while we are funded for that 850-plus students, we're not falling back on the code that says 90% of that. We're actually seating 100% of what we're receiving funding for. So with all those children, we still receive registrations for over that amount. So our registration usually, over the last two, three years, falls above 900. It looks as if, from a historical analysis, that we are just about leveling off in our preschool registration numbers, okay? However, our pending placement list, believe it or not, is actually decreasing. So this year, we have the smallest pending placement list, which began at right around 71, and we are now down to 65 on the pending placement list. So some people would say, "65, oh my goodness, that's a lot of students on a pending placement list." However, that number keeps getting lower each year because the Department of Education keeps giving us funding for additional classrooms, if that makes sense. So what we did this year, based upon comments that I heard last year and the Department of Early Childhood heard last year, and So we're funded well over 150% of our universe while other former Abbott districts are not yet filling all of their universe seats. So we do benefit from the ability to seat as many preschool students as we can. We are seating as many children as we are being funded for. So while we are funded for that 850-plus students, we're not falling back on the code that says 90% of that. We're actually seating 100% of what we're receiving funding for. So with all those children, we still receive registrations for over that amount. So our registration usually, over the last two, three years, falls above 900. It looks as if, from a historical analysis, that we are just about leveling off in our preschool registration numbers, okay? However, our pending placement list, believe it or not, is actually decreasing. So this year, we have the smallest pending placement list, which began at right around 71, and we are now down to 65 on the pending placement list. So some people would say, 65, oh my goodness, that's a lot of students on a pending placement list. However, that number keeps getting lower each year because the Department of Education keeps giving us funding for additional classrooms, if that makes sense. So what we did this year, based upon comments that I heard last year and the Department of Early Childhood heard last year, and that was, define the process. Define exactly what you're doing and be transparent. Just say exactly how children are being seated. So we did that. We put language to the process by which children are selected for preschool. We didn't change the preschool process at all. We just added terminology to what was being done and we put it out there. And I do believe that because we clarified the process, to some it looked or felt new. However, what the Hoboken Public School District does and has done for the last few years, I definitely cannot attest to beyond five years, but I can say, over the last few years, what the district has done is they use what are called requirements and priorities. So what we do is we first determine the number of required seats that we must fill, okay? And so those required seats first begin with special education. We are required to do what's called an early child find. And also, any children that go through early intervention for special education at the preschool level or just prior to three-years-old are required to have a seat in a former Abbott preschool program. So we must determine a specific number of seats that must be held for children with special needs or potentially will be classified during that three-year-old time, okay? So we do that. And now, we are also required, based on new legislation, to hold seats for children who are deemed homeless, okay? So those are two requirements. Now, in addition to that, and I would like to make this point really clear because what I've learned, as I've been here for almost two years, is as the onion unpeels, you begin to see where some misunderstandings or misconceptions come from. There is another required component, and that is seats for Head Start children, okay? Now, all of you on this board, including many people in the public, have heard early childhood say, "We are not allowed to prioritize for income eligibility," correct? That is something that's reported out. That is correct, in the sense that the school district is not allowed to ask for income-related information upon registration. However, once children are registered, the district does have a responsibility to assess the addresses of every child and the data that we have at hand and determine which children would be considered income-eligible for a number of seats that are predetermined and given to us by the New Jersey Department of Education, fed to the Department of Ed through the federal government, okay? We receive 90 seats for Head Start, okay? So other people might say, "How is it possible that there are only 90 seats for Head Start?" But I can tell you that the number of Head Start seats hasn't really changed that much over the years. What has changed is the rest of the population in Hoboken has grown around the income-eligibility seats, okay? So with those 90 seats, we determine which children are income-eligible, they are in those seats. And then if there are children beyond the 90 seats, then there's a process, okay? So now that we have the kind of that foundation lead, now what I would like to communicate to the Board and the public is that we go through a system of, now we shift to what are considered priorities. And basically, our next priority is what we call sibling priority. So if there is a sibling of a child who registers for pre-K3 or pre-K4, pre-K3 in particular, and they have a child that attends one of the Hoboken Public Schools, they receive priority. Beyond the special education seats, the Head Start seats, the seats that are set aside for homeless, and then the sibling priority seats, all those children are given seats. And the remaining number is then what is left for the remaining number of children who have registered. In the past, this district has always held a lottery, but we've never called it a lottery and it has never been done publicly. So while I see now sometimes, or people have told me that on some blogs or social media, people are asking, "When did we start the new lottery?" We have always had the lottery. The only difference is, this year, I required the Department of Early Childhood to hold it in public. I wanted those people who were not given a seat based on priority or based on any of the requirements to actually have the ability to attend a lottery and watch. We placed just, I believe we placed 281 children in the lottery at Brant School the other night, beyond all of the preferences and the requirements. With those 280, parents were given a slip. Slips were also put into the lottery bin, names were called, and they were reported on the spot so parents knew if they had a space in the program. When the lottery was completed, there was 71 seats left for, of children that did not receive a spot, either in the lottery, the requirements, or the priority. So we had an intermission. Those families that were given a seat were allowed to leave so that we can, could address those families that did not receive a seat yet. We then ran the lottery again and gave every single one of those families on the pending placement list a number. So they knew exactly where they stood because the question came up last year and in years past, I believe, "How do we have any idea where we are and how do we know whether or not someone isn't just picking a name because they either know someone or something along those lines?" So I asked the Department of Early Childhood to actually run the lottery for the pending placement as well. And as a result, we created a list in numerical order of those who were selected. We explained to the parents who were there in that process that they then would be notified on a periodic basis, and I've asked the Department of Early Childhood to actually come up with a specific set amount of time that parents would be notified so they knew where their number was and if the number would be moving. Now, let me go back to the Head Start seats so that everyone is clear about this as well. All 90 seats for Head Start are full and were full. Beyond those 90 seats, in the lottery, we had an additional seven children that were income-eligible, okay? So what does that mean? What that means is we run two simultaneous pending placement lists that we are required to run. We have one pending placement list that has all of the children, and then there is a pending placement list for just the income-eligible children for those 90 Head Start seats, okay? So the Head Start children have their own pending placement list, but they also run simultaneously in the regular list. If a Head Start seat opens, they are the only children eligible to fill those seats. However, if those seats don't open, they continue to move in the regular pending placement list, if that makes sense, okay? Upon the lottery's completion, we then go back and ask families one more time, "Are you sure you're staying in Hoboken? Are there any available seats? Do you plan on moving?" And we had six out of the seven seats that were on the waiting list became open, of four-year-olds, rising three-year-olds going to four, that were moving out of the district. So we move those income-eligible children on the pending placement list into seats. So that's where we stand right now. Our pending placement list is down around the mid-60s. At this time last year, we were just at, right around 130. I think we were at 129. But the result, that is the result, the lowered number is the result of the New Jersey Department of Education giving us four additional funded classrooms for 2017, 18. So I hope that helps. I hope it makes sense so you have a better understanding of where that is. And we are doing everything we can to ensure that families know, and people have told me that on some of the social media blogs, families are asking other individuals, "Please, if you're moving, let us know" so that the district can actually move the children onto the list. So that's where we stand. The list does move relatively fast. And obviously, we can't promise when children will be placed, but we will be informing parents along the way. So what we did this year is we simply defined that process and put that process out, not necessarily a new process, however, just defined, okay? Any questions with that? No? Mr. Biancomano, you look like you're pondering a little bit. Keep going, okay?
I have a comment on that.
Okay.
A lot of people over the years, I think, have the wrong impression of being a former Abbott district, that our district had to supply a seat for every three- and four-year-old child. It's not where you explained it today with the universe number. With that, it's always been said in the public that they have to seat the children. That's where I think the district has run off in their problems over the year by not explaining that point that you did tonight.
So we continue to seat. So this year, with that pending placement list, we continued to seat all the way through January. And once we got to January, we seated and the seats were, the pending placement list ended at that point. Now, the other interesting thing, just so that everyone knows, is that I have asked the Department of Early Childhood to ensure that the, one of the other priorities are children who were on the pending placement list as pre-K3 children, if by some chance they didn't get a seat as a pre-K3, that they would have priority as a pre-K4 since they had been sitting on the pending placement list for a full year. Giving the opportunity for a resident in the district with a three-year-old on that pending placement list to have the opportunity to go into a seat. So although we didn't have to do that because the three-year-olds were, everyone was actually placed for this school year. So that's where we stand with that.
I just want to bring up, I think this is very important, the way you presented it tonight, and usually, starting in June, July, and August, we start to get the emails from parents who are concerned about their child being on a waiting list or the pending placement list, as we're calling it this year. And I think that it's a little difficult giving this long-winded response about actually how it works. So I think that raising awareness should be probably the way we should go in terms of basically getting ahead of the questions, possibly telling these parents, sending the, maybe this slide or whatever type of relevant information you have with the pending placement letter to parents, just letting them know, and as Mr. Madigan stated, I mean, that is public, I guess, gossip that every student has to be placed when every student really does not have to be placed, just 90% of the students does.
Right. No, thank you. We are doing that, there's also a video that outlines that process from the preschool orientation program, which also sits with the HECAC information. So we are in the process and that's on the website, but getting that out, pushing it out as opposed to having people go to that website and actually look.
And just out of curiosity, in terms, how many pre-K3 and pre-K4 prospective students were not placed this year, would you say?
So at this time last year, like I said, we were at about 130. I have to look back at my notes in August because I do remember reporting out, we were, I think we were right around the 100 mark, maybe in August. By mid-September to the end of September, we were down to maybe 45. And then it trickled a little bit and got itself down to completing the pending placement list by mid-January to early February.
Now, let's say a parent, their child is not placed by the time school starts in September, and they decide to go an alternative route, whether that's paying for daycare or what have you. Can they still remain on the list?
Oh, they absolutely do, yeah.
They only can come off the list if they voluntarily take themselves off the list.
That's correct. And we have offered seats to families that have been on the pending placement list and their children were enrolled somewhere else. They did not want to move their child, and so they asked if they could move to the end of the pending placement list with the hope that they could complete pre-K3 where they are, but enter pre-K4. So we allow them to rotate back into the pending placement list.
Thank you.
I just, I have one question. Thank you for that explanation because I know there's been a lot of, you know, just questions, and this is kind of an intense month with getting the letters and everything. I just wanted to ask you if you can just clarify a little bit. Some of the questions that have risen are regarding preference in terms of school, right? So I know this year, that has been taken away in the form, but some parents are still confused because I guess they're getting some letters saying that if you got into a school and that's not the school of your choice, that you could change. So I just, I wonder if you can clarify a little bit about the preference, how we're doing it this year in terms of pre-K and maybe the difference between the pre-K placement and kindergarten and up?
Yeah, so there have been no letters distributed for pre-K that indicate that if parents get into a place that they're not satisfied with, they can then move the placement. We haven't placed pre-K students, just so you know. We've selected preschool, the pre-K students, but we have not done the locations for pre-K3 yet. So in the past, we asked for preschool parents to provide a first choice and a second choice after they visited all of the sites. And so what ended up happening over the last few years is parents would visit sites and they would use the day and they would, on our scheduled visits, and they would go to RUI and they would go to St. Francis and they would come to Demarest and Brant and so on and so forth, and they would look at all of the schools and then they would give their choice. Well, we opened up a program, almost making it appear as if they could go to each place and pick what they liked and put down their choices. It's possible that that could have worked if we didn't have a pending placement list issue. But because we do have a pending placement list issue and because we know two things, and those two things are, we have a lot of siblings of pre-K3 and pre-K4 children that require the preschool child to be in the same building or close enough location to where their sibling is. That's the first thing. And then the second thing is, we run certain programs at different preschool locations that address the needs of some of the required programs. So what was happening was, if a child was placed or income-eligible for a Head Start program, but there was, but Head Start doesn't operate in Wallace or let's say even in Demarest, the parent was beginning to believe that they were not given their choice. But the problem was that the required program that that child would be part of was not offered at that particular location. We also noticed that after having a lot of conversations and interviews, and HECAC did a lot of interviews with parents, the preschool parents were more concerned with being placed than where they were placed. They wanted a seat in the preschool program as opposed to where they were actually placed. And the last thing that we found is that when preschool children were placed, and you see strollers all over the city of Hoboken, when they were placed in locations that were furthest from their residence, at the preschool level in particular, our attendance rates for those children were not good at all. And one of the reasons why, obviously, is because we found that during inclement weather, snow or rain... snow or rain, because it's a walking district, and there's not buses taking children from school to school as a result of the mile-square distance, the preschool... some of the preschool families that were very far away from their home just kept their child home. And so we were hitting high absentee rates in those instances. So what we announced this year was, we're not going to put this forward as a almost false pretense that you're going to select a first and a second choice. This was for preschool. What we said was, we are going to go through these priorities, and this is how the priority process would work. We're not getting questions there. We're not getting questions on location with preschool. We do, just so you know, after placements are done, with both preschool and kindergarten, parents do have the opportunity to submit a letter or can contact and request a meeting with both the Director of Early Childhood or myself to discuss if there's extenuating circumstances, such as an illness of a parent, a disability of a parent that has difficulty getting from place to place. There are some circumstances where we will look at our available seats in other locations. But we very clearly explained to the preschool population that came to the orientation that that was not going to be done in terms of asking for your first choice and your second choice. Where we are getting some questions is at the kindergarten level. So now I just want to shift to kindergarten. That priority description and requirement description around preschool was woven also around kindergarten. So let me talk about kindergarten for a second. Our pre-K4 children are all evaluated based upon address, siblings, and program requirements. That's not new. We've always done that. So we know how many pre-K4 children we have across the district, and whether or not they have siblings in any of our elementary schools. And if they do, those children automatically get rolled and placed into the elementary school that their sibling is in for family ease and convenience. Okay? So we are not going to place a pre-K4 child who is in Brant but has siblings in Connors. We're not going to place them in Brant. We're going to place them with the sibling to keep the family's school location intact. That's our first step. We do that. So just to give you an idea, we have 42 open kindergarten seats at Connors for the 2017-18 school year. I'm using that as an example. I know that out of those 42 seats, I have 27 pre-K4 children with siblings in Connors. Okay? So that's... so we do that with every single one of our pre-K4 children. And that tells us how many seats we have left in each of the locations. Every year, the numbers of kindergarten do change a little bit in the different schools, which is why kindergarten placement is so difficult in Hoboken. And it's so difficult in Hoboken because the size of our elementary schools are very different. So in many places, the elementary schools are built to be somewhat consistent, and they run the same number of sections all the way through. In Hoboken, that's not the case. And so our elementary schools vary in size, but they also vary in historic patterns of class sections. So what I mean by that is, for example, in the Wallace School, we could have three sections or two sections at an upper grade, but have eight sections at a lower grade. Where what we are beginning to try to do in our schools is to create consistency of sections based upon school size. Because when you don't have that, you create a situation where you're changing the kindergarten perception of enrollment each year. So just to give you an idea, we will be operating seven kindergarten classes in September in Wallace. We will be operating six kindergarten classrooms in Brant. We will be operating two kindergarten classrooms in Connors. Connors is traditionally a two-section building. And we will be operating one kindergarten class in Calabro, because Calabro is traditionally a one-section school as well. Okay? And how do we determine that? We determine that based upon how much room is left in the schools. Due to the growing enrollment district-wide and in the city, that's how we determine how many seats we have. We then place the pre-K4 children with siblings, and then we know how many seats are left. We then go to programs. So our ADA program and many of our special education programs are housed at Wallace, so that's our next piece. We place children based on those programs. Then we look at ESL courses that we offer. We offer ESL at both Wallace and Connors. So we then place children that are in need of ESL services in those schools as well. It leaves a very small population of children left to be placed. And then what happens is, the Early Childhood Office does, did this year, did last year, and did over the last couple of years, they calculate the distance based on walking to the schools. Okay? When they do that, they place the children closest to the school buildings in those school buildings. But I have to tell you that even when you look at it in that way, there's still an overage in some of our schools. So for example, we can't fit all of the children who live in the streets around Calabro in Calabro because it's too small. I can't fit all of the children in southwest Hoboken in Connors because it's too small. It just... it doesn't work. So then, after we place the children that are closest in walking distance, the other children are then placed based upon seat availability in schools. Okay? That's kindergarten. That's how kindergarten works. Now, there is an old policy in the district that talks about giving the district and Board of Education the ability to have people apply, but the requirements around the application are after the seats are full, if there are available seats. Okay? But I am going to tell you that as a district, from a hard and fast rule perspective, we never close the door to parents who have extenuating circumstances and come and ask for some sort of consideration. But parents have to understand, their children need to be placed first. They need to be placed first based on our process, and then we look at the process in its totality. But that is the manner in which children had been placed in the past. I don't know if the district ever had geographic lines or boundaries drawn around elementary schools. I'm not sure. Maybe years and years ago. But with the developments that are going up in different parts of the city, and with the growing preschool population and increasing kindergarten first through fifth-grade population, we are kind of bound to seats that are available in different places. Right now, we're in the process of doing a full analysis of our demographics, our enrollment. We are looking at everything associated with that to potentially hone in and create a, maybe to some people more logical, to other people more efficient, but a system that we can continue to wrap our head around as the city continues to grow. Because that's pretty much where we stand. So that's the kindergarten process. So does anyone have any questions about that? Yeah. Okay. You sure? If you do, you can... you certainly can ask later. That's kindergarten. A couple other quick things, and then I'll fly through these because I'm completely monopolizing this. I do want everyone to know that our gifted and talented selection process, identification process is complete. The children have completed their testing, and as a result of the Stay 9 scores that have come back, we now will begin the process of completing Johns Hopkins testing for children. We have brought the Pull-Out Gifted and Talented Program to second grade, and kindergarten in first grade will remain as a challenge and support flexibly grouped identified population for K and 1. And next year, we will look at the expansion of first grade for that. We've completed that, though. I do want the board to know that we have just entered into a new partnership and membership with the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. So we were happy about that. We were also invited just recently to participate in the North Jersey Equity and Excellence Consortium in partnership with UPenn, and that is a Bob Jervis program. It's in the state of New Jersey, although it's in the tri-state area, so we will enter into that particular consortium, starting in September as well. We've already accepted our membership into that. I want the board to know that the Class of 2017 continues to impress us in addition to the local scholarships that are on the board agenda to be approved tonight, and the scholarship dinner that's being held on Thursday evening. The Class of 2017 has earned over $9 million in university and college scholarships for academics, athletics, and merit. And then lastly, I would like you to know that we have a group of very talented art students that are going to be working with the city to do a sustainability mural project in a northwest pop-up park. They were supposed to actually paint today. There's no shade there, so we actually held them back, so we're going to do that at a different time. I'd also like the Board of Education and the public to know that there is a new mobile app. You can actually download it in the App Store or also through Google Play. You just have to search Hoboken SD, SD standing for School District, and that's where you'll find it. That mobile app, just a couple highlights so everybody knows, it's an integrated emergency notification system. So for those of you who do take great interest in really like trying to see if we can narrow our contracts down, this mobile app is part of our web hosting contract, but it gives us the ability to eliminate our Blackboard Connect contract. So we're putting it all in one. Notifications will then go out over the mobile app, as well as by choice phone, text message, or email. There's also a searchable staff directory on the mobile app, and you also have the ability to search other directory now on the website as well. And then on the app, when you do download it, you have the ability to select whichever school or schools that you would like notifications coming from. But the district is a default, so you will always receive those, and you will select the schools. We have gone through training also on determining what type of information, because a mobile app is public, as opposed to sending notifications through a Blackboard Connect, would actually go out via the mobile app versus our secure email route and notification route with parents outside of the mobile app. Our summer programs, I just want to let everybody know that we are running a school-based youth services camp for high school students, which we always do every year. We're running our district music camp and a district band camp, and thanks to Mr. Stasiak, the band camp is running an extra week this year at the end of the summer. We are also running our theater camp. We are running our special education extended school year program. We are running math action labs that are going to be tied to the math summer assignments. No longer are we going to be distributing packets of math work to kids. We're actually having all of our kids receive through EdMentum, a system that we actually use, and iXL, a prescriptive summer program online. But we are opening math labs throughout the month of August for children to be able to come in and work with teachers if they have limited access to the internet or have difficulty with any kind of technology in their homes, and they will have the luxury of a certified teacher that can assist them with that work as well. And then lastly, we are also offering a summer prevention program and credit recovery program for children who are still showing some skills for agility in the area of math and language arts literacy, and our credit recovery program at the high school. Summer work that's going on, we're almost halfway through our staffing for the 2017-18 school year. We will be developing new math, social studies, and world language curriculum this summer. So Mr. Fitzhugh and his team will be extremely busy with that work. Our project lead, The Way, teachers will be attending multiple STEM training programs throughout the summer. We have a group of teachers who will be participating in a Stevens STEAM training program as well. That's for middle school teachers. We have a newly formed staff diversity council who that group has met already, brainstormed some suggestions for the 2017-18 school year, and a core group of the staff diversity council. We're waiting on confirmation of acceptance to the National CED Diversity Training in Massachusetts, and have begun to have conversations with the Ed Foundation regarding funding that particular training program. That will also include people outside of the staff as well if we're accepted to the program. It looks pretty good so far. We are in the process of designing the middle school program of studies and the new schedule, and also designing the after-school program. And we are just about underway with moving some offices already and beginning to start the renovation process for the new middle school in Demarest on the third and the fourth floor. We're putting an information packet together for all sixth-grade parents and seventh-grade parents that will go out at the end of this week, that will describe courses that are going to be offered, opportunities that will be offered to kids, and also some of the kids' choices regarding school colors and mascots. They've been contributing to some of those things as well. So that will all go out, and it'll be shared with the Board of Education as well at the end of the year. End of the year calendar, all of you have this. These are all of the things that are going on. I'm not going to go through these, but I do want you to know that the middle school moving up ceremony has been changed by one day. It's in your Google document. If you actually just open that document that Mr. He Cox sent to all of you, you'll see the change. It's because it was in conflict with Wallace's, and there were some parents that had children in both schools that asked that it be moved and changed. So that's what's going on in the district in terms of summer work, summer programming, and also some information to help educate both the board and the community. So if anyone has questions moving forward this evening, by all means, ask. And if not, you certainly could email or give me a call during the week. Sorry.
That was a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, to reiterate some of the comments that I heard, what I've learned over the years is, even though this is so very clear and so open right now, the next person who moves into Hoboken is not going to know this. So I think that's the next step, as I heard, is to memorialize this in some sort of accessible way, just to eliminate the questions in the future. That's fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Moffett, I don't see anybody else with questions. Mr. Moffett, do you have a report?
No report this time.
Okay. Then we'll go into committee reports. Communications, Ms. Delara, do you have?
Yeah, we do. So the Communications Committee met, and attendants were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, myself, and Ms. Sobolov. The district mobile app, which Dr. Johnson just spoke about, is up and running. So if you go on Google or the App Store, you just type in Hoboken SD, and you automatically can download that app to your phone. So we all sat around, and we kind of played with it a little bit, and it's a really cool app. What I like most about it is that it's very filterable, so if you have a child at Connors or at Wallace or at Brant, you can really tailor it to fit, you know, your family's... it to fit, you know, your family's, your children's school. And as Dr. Johnson had said, it's just another way to get notifications via your phone, right? So, you'll get it, for example, if this is school closing, you'll get an email and a phone call, and now you'll also get a ding through the app, which is great. So, Hoboken SD, that's the name of the app. The district is also planning in talks of doing a State of the District event, which will be held in September. And this event will just primarily be to just talk about some of the upcoming and the continuing initiatives that we have within our district to inform new and current families within our schools. And lastly, we talked a little bit about a key communicators and a communication kit. So, basically, we talked a little bit about, you know, as a new family coming in and moving into the district, what that's like, right? And so, it's just, it's, we talked about a new key communicators kit, which is some of the, I guess, the name that was kind of thrown around, which is, I think it's very sweet. It's Who's My Neighbor? So, it's going to be made up of a group of parents that have recently moved to Hoboken, and they will share key experiences and more as a guide to parents that have just moved to Hoboken, talk about, you know, the application process, just not within our schools, but really just about our town, which I think, which I think, you know, as a new parent, you want, you want something, you want something like that when you're just moving into our town. And then also, we talked a little about a communication kit. So, these are more like pamphlets or flyers that will be more tailored to specific topics. So, for example, we talked about like preschool, so just having something in hand to talk about different key topics within our preschool, within our special education program, within our high school curriculum of studies, just something that you can just take home. You know, there's so much information, so we were just thinking of tailoring and just kind of breaking it down by each department, by each category. And both of these will be not just pamphlets, but they'll also be digital, which is nice because we can email, you can share, you can post it on social media and those kind of things. So, we're thinking of beginning that work on this over the summer. And that's it.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee, Ms. Sobolov?
The Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, June 6th at 1:30. In attendance was Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Evans, and myself. Some of the things that were discussed was the Hoboken High School master schedule, which is the master scheduling is complete now for all the students and class selections. And having it done this early kind of gives the administration a strong picture of student interest and allocating the staff and the resources. The scheduling used the newly completed new high school program of studies, which we had discussed in previous months. And so, many of the new or reconstructed offerings were popular. Some of them that filled up very quickly were cultural literacy, People Who Shaped the World, mathematical analysis of sports, international pastry and world cuisine, Mandarin Chinese, and AP freshman environmental science. Also, classes that were for all their Google certification course and the Microsoft certification course, and 60 students have signed up for the Project Lead the Way biomedical track. And then recently, there was a Cyber Patriots camp was offered to, as an after-school activity to students in sixth through 11th grade interested in learning more about the Hoboken Cyber Patriot Team and to prepare for the participation in the middle school team and the high school Cyber Patriot competition in the next school year. 60 students signed up for that. We had a lot of other discussion about the middle school program of studies, the summer assignments, the curriculum work, and the staff diversity council, but that was covered in the previous discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Madigan, do you have a facilities committee report?
Yes, I do. It was, our facilities committee was held on Tuesday, June 6th. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Sobolov, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and myself. On a few issues we discussed, one on the agenda where there were two facilities requests and we approved them at a meeting. It's an annual one for two different organizations that rent out once a week the whole year. The next, we talked about the middle school relocation updating. And Ms. Callagie said they've ordered padding for the gym walls and they're going to be redoing the gym floors, and it's still moving forward. The construction can't start till July 1st after we're renting it out at this point, so we can't get in until then. So, but our plans are moving forward. Stadium bathrooms are done. I looked at, I was down there the other night and I looked at them, they look very good. They'll be ready for graduation. On our capital improvement planning for the summer, we have the high school will begin a biomedical classroom. And in Wallace, they will begin on the stage and gym, they will have a new sound system and a new curtain installed. And that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Angley, the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met on Monday, June 5th at 7:30 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Clubfeld, Mr. Biancomano, Mr. McNamara, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for board approval. I just want to point out a few of those agenda items. 10.09, approval of professional service awards and appointments for the 2017-18 school year. This is an annual process where the district goes out through an RFQ, RFP, or bid process for vendors, many of which are required, such as our accounting firm or law firm, environmental engineers. The amounts listed are not to exceed amounts, and for the majority of these vendors, actual payments will depend on the work assigned to them. 10.10, approval of award for labor negotiator. Based on the review of the RFQ submitted and an in-person interview, the committee recommends Scirillo, Cornell, Merlino, McKeever, and Osborne to represent the district in the upcoming negotiations. 10.14 through 10.17, these resolutions approve the district's participation in cooperative pricing agreements. And 10.30, approval of school depositories and signatures. We did create a new account this year, which is an athletic account to help expedite the paying of officials. We also talked about the food service update. April profits are approximately $1,800. April year-to-date, $17,000, and the full year projection is to be $23,000. In addition, the administration has sent out communications regarding unpaid lunch balances. An analysis will be done shortly after the school year ends to determine the cause of the balance and how best to collect and eliminate those unpaid balances going forward.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Evans, Governance and Personnel?
Thank you. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on June 5th. In attendance were myself, Ms. Sobolov, Mr. Clubfeld, and Superintendent Johnson. We reviewed all agenda items and approve all for approval tonight. I'll just mention a few of the generated discussion or questions. Item 9.08, this is a program that will be offered in the upcoming school year at the high school by the Arc of New Jersey. It's called the Planning for Adult Life Program, and it's offered to high school students with individualized education plans and will help them learn life skills in seven core areas, including employment. As the superintendent mentioned, there's a lot of planning going on to close out the current school year, preparing for the upcoming school year. So, you'll see several items on tonight's agenda for that, things like guidance counselors and child study team. Where you'll also see items as we prepare for summer programs like the district's special education summer program as well as the music and band camps. Item 9.18, this item approves a transition of the district's policy provider to Strauss Esme. And we discussed that over the summer, the superintendent and administrators will be conducting a review of all policies and will be making recommendations for changes. Item 9.22, local organizations and individuals are contributing 41 scholarships to graduating seniors, and we'd like to thank them very much for their generosity and support of our students. Item 9.24, several of our teachers will be attending workshops, programs, and training over the summer, including for Project Lead the Way. And in addition to agenda items, the committee also discussed staffing levels and needs for the upcoming school year in comparison to past years. And finally, the superintendent is conducting an analysis of the substitute process that got instituted this year. We've talked about this a bit with the previous process where we utilized a subservice, we were having problems securing adequate subs. So, we moved to a new program where we staff subs, we schedule them in advance. And so, we're doing a review of the costs and also how effective that was in covering our classrooms. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to take the opportunity here to go over a couple of housekeeping things. One is, I neglected to mention, but we will be going into executive session tonight to discuss some personnel issue. I don't think there'll be any action taken. There'll be no action taken. So, at some point, we'll save at the very end of the meeting, we'll go into executive session. There's, mention this for the benefit of members of the public here, we will be in executive session for 15, 20, 30 minutes. I don't know. But there's nothing to wait around for. We're just going to come back and close the meeting afterwards. The awards dinner at the high school tomorrow night. If you haven't RSVP yet, I encourage you to. It's a great time to honor our students. I'm sorry, Thursday night, Thursday night, today's.
I said, wow, sorry.
But you do have to RSVP so they can plan the seating, but it's a great time to recognize our students and the, when the community comes together, support our graduating seniors. I ask board members to take a look at your summer schedules. We do have a busy summer. We have a meeting on June 27th, July 25th, and August 22nd. We'll also have committee meetings, assuming the week before. So, I would say let, we should all, let, if you know you have a conflict, let Ms. McQuillan probably know ahead of time to aid the superintendent in scheduling meetings and make sure that we always have a quorum. You're certainly entitled to your vacations, and we can run a meeting, you know, with less than full board, but we just need to make sure that we're well represented and have a quorum at the meeting. So, I'd appreciate the, taking a look at your calendars and letting us know. That takes us to public comments on, I'm sorry, questions on?
Yes. I'll go first. Real quick one on yours, just that, since we're, I know we're now meeting in July. Years ago, oh, years ago, was that the reason why they had two meetings in June? So, next year, we'll only have one in June? Vito shaking and said yes, just so you know.
I'm the old timer up here, so.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, the answer is yes. Did they establish that?
The two meetings in June, since they were not. So, now since we have July, maybe next year, we don't have two in June? If that's the superintendent, I think I might be overstepping. I don't know.
Well, the two in June, in, from the information that was given to me, were, was so that the students of the month could be honored in both, because, because so many families are away in the summer, that the June students of the month would not be able to attend a July meeting. So, a second one was done in June. I don't.
Okay. No problem. That's, I was just asking that now. One other one. Sharon of Bill List Wodoffa, from items 1014 to 1017, do we pay for that?
There's only one that we pay a fee for, and that's Ed Data. The others are free to participate.
Which one's that one? No, I'm sorry.
That is, I believe, 10.17. Let's see.
10.17?
Yeah.
Yes, 10.17, right.
And 10.10, I meant to get to you this weekend and I was very busy, but is this the company that, the firm that did the last teachers negotiation?
It is not.
Okay. Because I know we had a problem, we didn't even use them on their last negotiation part of it. So, that's what I'm saying.
Different firm.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and a compliment, and a question on the new check-in for the sports. So, the referees after the game or meets would be paid that night? Is that the way it will work?
No. What happens is they still do the paperwork. What was happening in the past, the officials and any type of game official would have to wait for the bill list. So, we established a check, checking account separate so that we could move money in once, twice a year and pay out of that checking account in a quicker manner, so they wouldn't have to wait the 45 days or 60 days that some were complaining about.
Okay. A lot of, I'm an official in a couple of sports, and you say you're from Hoboken, but right there, oh, forget it, you never get paid, I don't want to work there. Now, some schools, I walk in and I fill out the papers that we do and they hand them a check. So, I don't know if that could be looked at in the future of that way because the athletic director would know who the officials are coming for that night. Like, well, I get my schedule usually in the beginning of the year, so he knows which ones are coming. And I don't know. It's just something for you to look into that other districts do that I know would help a lot of the officials that would come to work, would rather come to work here from Hudson County than at this point do not want to come. So, thank you.
Any questions? Then we'll move to public comments on agenda items only. Mr. Moffett, you?
That's Ms. Pat Waiters.
Bill the Clock.
Patricia Waiters, a few things. First, thank you, Dr. Johnson, for that clarification. I received so many phone calls that Thursday night, and I got to the lottery like at the very end, and people panicked and going all crazy, but this is really going to help me clarify to them step by step exactly what's going on. Damian, Damian Arno for the summer program. This is just to really give kudos to him. You don't understand that this guy is like, has a big, huge impact on most of us here in Hoboken, our family and our children. Is this him being hired for the summer program, one of the ones you mentioned tonight? Any of the summer programs where, you know, will he be involved with, like helping our kids with math or whatever?
His, his appointments on this agenda for the summer are for summer work related to guidance functions or guidance office functions, not necessarily direct teaching.
In the classroom. All right. But I mean, he will be available in the school during this. Okay. Thank you. That's good. Kudos, please. I encourage y'all, please, to vote yes on that. And on scholarships, page 15, I want to say thank you to all of these people that think about our Hoboken students at graduation time, but I noticed I don't see the non-for-profit, the Hoboken Board of Education, Public School Board of Education. A lot of people come and confront me with that, too. I don't know exactly what that means. Is it part of the Hoboken Public School Board of Education, the one that stayed with Trenton versus the non-for-profit one? The Hoboken Public School Board of Education? I don't see it on there, but I'm just saying, this is the non-for-profit one, right? But this young man, you the co-founder of, maybe you can answer me later with that.
Are you talking about the Public Education Foundation?
Yes. Is that part of the Hoboken? That's the name of it. So, people get confused.
Right, yeah.
Because it says Hoboken Public Schools.
I think this is, I'm not sure, I don't think they are giving a scholarship for you. So, I think this is approving scholarships.
All right. No, but I want to thank them, but I'm saying, I don't know this. I see yours, I'll save you for the public portion. Thank you anyway. I'll save that for the public portion. But thanks to all the people that are donating or giving scholarships. And, page 21, the free and reduced lunch. The after-school lunch that's in the school, right, for, it's supposed to be for students with activities, they don't have like real clarification on that. A few times, my son was turned away, him and a few of his friends, when they stayed for tutoring or whatever. I didn't know you have to be involved in an activity like cheerleading, football or whatever. They didn't specify that when they brought this, this group on. I was here that night. And my son went to eat and was turned away like twice. So, he come home like eating everything besides the paint off the wall. But he stayed in school for tutoring, and I think you should think about that. That's like an after-school activity, and he don't get to eat till he leave there sometime, come home 10 minutes to 6:00. But he was definitely turned away. I beg you to look into that because I was told that, you know, when it stayed approved it, I thought it was more for like the free and reduced lunch students and stuff like that would be eligible. that would be eligible if they played sports or stayed after school. All right? And then, the last one, page 23. I asked William P. Morford, that's the business administrator?
That's me, yes.
Right. That's what I was trying to ask. Okay. I just wanted to put the name and the face together. Okay. Good luck. Congratulations. I encourage you to vote for him, too. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only speaker?
That was the only speaker, correct.
Then, I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Could I ask one more question? I got to ask, I want to ask with the pricing and everything and ordering products. One day, a few weeks ago, I was driving home, and I saw a thing in Weehawken thanking Adidas sponsoring Weehawken. So, I asked someone from Weehawken what it was about, staff member. And he said that they have a contract with Adidas itself, and they get money back when they buy products for their sporting things, and they give them a donation once they sign the contract either. And then, I heard it's in a few different other districts.
The Weehawken School District does their partnership with Adidas first through their education foundation. And so, there's two things going on. The district itself doesn't athletic, they only buy Adidas because of the partnership with the, their education foundation. However, they do have a donation, because the Weehawken School District has a naming rights policy. And in the naming rights policy, they have companies and organizations that will be permitted to put their names and signs on school property. And so, if you drive past and look at the Weehawken football stadium, there's a big Adidas sign. And so, that is part and parcel of the foundation.
Getting money back, it's really right in space.
Correct. Yeah.
I've seen it on scoreboards to other districts.
We'll do a review to determine whether or not we have a particular policy that addresses naming rights.
Work while financially, too. That's all.
Any other questions? Think I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, before we have a nomination on the consent agenda, I would like to remove item 10.09 for separate vote and separate discussion.
10.09?
Correct.
Anything else?
Can we pull?
We're going to pull 10.09 from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Separate discussion, separate vote.
So, with that, consent agenda minus 10.09.
Motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Evans and second from Ms. Montgomery. Any discussion?
Yes.
Non-consent agenda?
Yes. Item 9.12, the approval of all the teachers' aides for summer education, summer program. I was just curious, Dr. Johnson, the hourly rates are all different. And I know that when I was on the negotiations committee, there seemed to be two separate salaries, one for ABA certified and one for non-ABA certified. So, I was just curious, when we hire them during the year, those salaries match. So, in the summertime, all the hourly rates are different. Is it because they're at different steps, or they're working different hours?
So, the ABA stipend versus the non-ABA stipend doesn't contribute to that at all. What it contributes to is that paraprofessionals are now, as a result, I believe of the last negotiations, are placed on steps. And so, their salaries are in fact different. And as a result of that, when they work in the summer, their hourly rates are different based on their annual salaries. So, they are all a bit different. We hire a lot of paraprofessionals, so you do see some of the same salaries, because a block might be hired at the same step. But, the different salaries you see for the summer are basically just their calculated hourly rate based upon their salary. That's why they're different.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, it breaks up that way.
Yeah.
And I just want to reiterate how important they are to the district. They serve the neediest of students, and to me, they don't get paid enough. My next question, 9.21, the approval of staff for summer music camp and summer band camp. I was just curious, is this being covered by a grant or tuition?
Okay. So, the summer music camp and the summer band camp, along with the summer theater camp, are funded at the end of the year via surplus.
Okay. So?
Each year, an amount is given and somewhat carried over from the year before. So, I'm not sure how far back these programs have actually.
So, do we know how much of the surplus is going to the camps this year, or?
Yeah. So, this, you can calculate it out, but it looks like the music and band camp run anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000 for the summer. Close, right there?
Total cost.
Well, our total cost is 10, but one of the, so, these people are board-approved at an up-to-rate. They don't all work the entire time. So, the anticipation of that is going to be, according to Mr. Emrico, coming lower than that $10,000. The drama camp, the theater camp is not on this agenda. It'll be on the next one, because Ms. Miller was in conversation with Mr. Moffett about what her total budget was. So, that will be on the next agenda, and we'll give you a total number for that when we approve them on the next one.
Okay. And in terms of the band and the camp that's on the agenda for tonight, it is based on student enrollment, correct? I mean, obviously, if there's not enough students enrolled in it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I believe this camp has a little over 60 students, correct?
And it's paid for by a surplus that you accumulate at the end of the year. Okay. Thank you.
Real quick, on 1017, can you tell me how much it does cost us, the district?
$7,000.
$7,000.
But, that being said, we reap the benefit of participating in that program. So, there are savings. Without participating, we wouldn't be getting some of the savings, which technically covers the cost of the fee.
I was looking through some of them. They have a lot of parts with the vendors. Some of them, I have problems with. A lot of not close to Hudson County, that we might have to wait on certain things being done. But, also, they'll say if it's Hudson County, 15% more or 25% more towards Hudson County. So, sometimes, it might not work out in the long run for us by going further out on certain...
Well, I mean, we are, we're involved in multiple programs. So, Mr. Moffett can speak for it.
Right. What this individual relationship provides is not only the products, instructional products, material that we need, and it's a quite seamless system where we can order in bulk and process it through that agency. And then, it automatically reverts into our system 3000, our financial system. So, that's a pretty big benefit. But, they do go out and bid for a lot of those products. And that takes, that's definitely a savings to the district, because that means, you know, people in my office don't have the time to do that. So, there's a time savings there. They do have skilled bids, which is fantastic when we're doing projects that we need to have quick responses, that we don't have the time, like three months, four months, five, maybe six, to go out and publicly bid. These are already basically pre-approved or pre-bid. They do, in fact, have something like what you say, is they'll have some trade areas, because the members of that group are Central Jersey as well. So, we'll go out with the bids. We've requested that in the past, that if there were some close to Hoboken or Hudson County, that we'd like to have that identified so that they would be a quicker response.
Yes.
But, as Ms. Angley said, not only do we have that, for example, if there's somebody in the skilled bids that maybe can't get to us in time, and they told us in advance, there may be a secondary or tertiary one. But, beyond that, we might have a chance to go on in the other cooperative arrangements we have. And they also allow for like a 10% savings on, if it's a state contract, and another vendor can beat the state contract by 10%, we could do that as well. So, there's a lot of options. That's why it's like a little bit of a menu tonight. We have several different cooperative agencies that we've participated in, and we've been able to reap benefits and save a significant amount of money. One of which was the Keystone, which was the field turf project.
I know I brought up last year, it was last year during our budget here, a year ago, that I had a problem, coaches complained to me, and I stand in there, that they'd order one, a set of pants from one company, and jerseys from another one, and it won't match. That's like, something like that, I don't think we should be doing where the kids don't look uniformed in the area, so.
Right. We've had those complaints and some internal discussion. I think when we go buy complete sets, that's what we do, rather than like jerseys one year, yeah, kind of match.
It has to be the same top and bottom from the same company either.
Yeah, so you get it from a...
Reebok Adidas or whoever, I don't know. I'm not saying any brand or...
No, no, that's right.
Not order from Reebok your pants and then your shirts from Adidas, you know? So, it is at the same lines, going down pants or tops, something like that. And our kids don't look proper there.
Right. I've been on several conversations, like every year, we do this. And the conversation with the athletic director is we try to find the uniforms that best address our situation. And if it means Ed Data is there, then that's fine. If it means we have a state contract, because I know there's a lot of participation from local vendors and state contracts as well, and they have to license a dealer also. So, sometimes, you know, one brand is on this cooperative, and then there's another brand. So, we try to see what that best fits for the district's needs.
But, we won't order two different uniforms for the same thing, tops or bottoms.
That is not the intent moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
No other discussion, questions? Then, we can call a vote. Mr. Moffett?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
No on 6.01. Abstain on 6.02, and yes on everything else.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Abstain on item 10.05 for number 55073, and yes on everything else.
Mr. Madigan?
10.05, no. 10.10, no. 10.12, no. 10.17, no. Everything else, yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Abstain on 10.05, number 55073, and yes on everything else.
And Mr. Cuffell?
I have to abstain on item 10.05, check number 55073, and yes on everything else.
That all passes.
Motion passes.
Time for public comment?
No, no. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What? We have a 10.09, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter. I'm sorry. I thought you'd just get by with that one. It was 10.?
Yes. So, 10.09.
The approval of professional contracts.
Many times, we discuss, and I know I definitely discussed, non-educational spending in the district. And tonight, there's plenty of contracts that fall under that category. The first one I want to point out is our general legal counsel contract tonight. When I was elected over six years ago to this board, one of the areas that I really wanted to focus on was legal fees. At that time, we were spending 300% over the state and county average on legal fees. And over the years, that number has decreased over and over again. And I'm proud that it has decreased that low, especially with sometimes, board members who disagree with me and fight me at every turn. And I want to thank those board members over the years for decreasing that. And tonight, we have an example of this. The not-to-exceed amounts on this, on our general legal counsel contract tonight has been decreased by $25,000. It was $150,000 at last week's finance committee meeting. But, I asked how much we were spending in the past, and Mr. Gagley already's law firm has kept their legal bills very, very low. So, I wanted to make sure that we did put a little bit of a lower number on the not-to-exceed amounts. And I'm glad that the finance committee obliged by that. And I want to thank them for doing so. But, going down the list, we do have another contract here tonight, which is Logic 54. It's formerly called Earthspec, which is a student transportation coordinator. And we discussed this at length last week at the finance committee. And I had asked the business office to get back to me with several pieces of information of why we're paying $71,000 for a student transportation coordinator that, to me, wasn't doing a job worth $71,000. And I ask about this every year. And the business office came back to us today and basically started talking about, well, you know, without that, we would have to hire another student transportation coordinator in district, and it'll cost us more money. But, the follow-up, the second question that I had last week, that wasn't even my question last week, because to me, it's almost like looking for an excuse of why we have to keep this contract, was can a privatization company do this? We went out and privatized. You know, I was against that privatization at the time. I still think that, although I'm being told we're saving money, that it probably wasn't the right idea for the district, but different story for a different time. And I never got an answer about whether or not a privatization company can do this for a lot cheaper. And I think with the staff in-house, from what the job description was of this company, it could be done in-house. So, Mr. Moffett, I'm going to ask you again. I emailed you again earlier today. Did we find out if a privatization company can do this job for a cheaper rate?
The answer is, to go out, you would have to bid this and work on specifications to do that. That's going to probably take at least three months to get out onto the street. To get that bid out, the way I think, I understand, which I have to be quite honest with you, I think I'm going to have to sit down with you to try to better understand what you consider to be a privatization-type company. These are professional contracts, so we would have to then articulate it in a way that you would keep an open door as far as other agencies that could come in. For example, maybe a jointure. So, we would have to then sit, discuss it. I would sit with you, then obviously, sit with the finance committee. And if it's something the board wanted to move forward with, then obviously, we'd get authorization to do that in that manner. As far as going and doing analysis, this is a very difficult, I think I did respond to your email. As far as to really compare it, it's not as simple as just deciding to go out to bid. You have to figure out a couple of things. When you compare other districts, district to district, it's even different. And I think we discussed that in the finance committee. You have districts that are very large, that have their own bus fleets, that have different requirements that you would have here. Because we don't have a bus fleet, we have various transportation providers. They do all our routes for special education. You have other districts that not only do special education, they do regular. They, they're not in walking city-type arrangements. So, really, to do comparison, that would be quite lengthy as well. But, really, to do what I think, I understand that you would consider to do, and I think you would have to then create bid specs and go and put it out and find out how much that would cost.
Well, and this is not the first year that I've been talking about this. And again, I tried to take it up in the finance committee, and you were supposed to get back to me with some information, and you did with some. So, my recommendation is, since all the options are not checked regarding if we can get a lower rate to do routes and to field complaints and whatever it is that Earthspec does, which I still don't have a clear understanding of, my recommendation is possibly could we amend this contract tonight to three months instead of a year? And go out for the specs and go out for bid and see if we can get a better rate for doing so. I mean, we're always looking to cut non-educational funding, and this is a perfect example of this, in my opinion. So, that's my recommendation.
And? No. While you may consider this non-educational, it is coordinating our most vulnerable children getting to where they need to be. So, you know, trying to amend a contract tonight, not knowing if we're able to do so.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Could leave our special education students at risk for summer transportation. Even though the routes are in place, who's coordinating those routes?
Right. Well, and I'm not saying to eliminate the contract completely. I'm saying to just, instead of approving for a year, you're approving them for three months. And I believe their contract also ends July 12. And I believe their contract also ends July, June 30th, which gives them some time to do it over the summer, so this will give them three months and two weeks while the specs are...
Yeah, if I may, as I cautioned in the finance committee, we have a lot of routes that are lifting off for our summer school program, so I would not recommend any type of change at this time. I think what I would, again, recommend to the board would be if this is a direction that the whole board would like to pursue, maybe send it into finance committee, have a conversation, and look to develop specs with the idea that next fiscal year, next school year, we then take this to fruition. That would be my recommendation, because not only, it would be a disruption if it ends in June 30, because you have all those routes, that'll be problematic, because there'll be no coordination over the summer for those students. And then you also have, at the same time, they're developing routes, going out and bidding potentially for routes that start September 1. So, I just would caution the board in that regard, but by all means, I serve at your pleasure, if that's a direction you want to go to, we can definitely figure something out with either a request or proposal or something along those lines.
And, and it can always come back on the agenda to extend them another few months. I, I'm just a little hesitant to commit to them for a year when we don't know if that's the most cost-efficientest option out there.
And again, we come back later on, now this is for bus routes, things like this, I understand it's our vulnerable people. I don't want to say the other part with vulnerable children, because that's when they went outside and they didn't care, people before myself and I don't know who else, but they didn't care about the vulnerable kids when they put it outside the district, but that's not the point of this. That's why we're paying this company $70,800. Again, I feel it's a high price, and we have another meeting before this has to take effect, this contract, in two weeks. Maybe you could call them, say, why don't you do it for $10,000 less? But this is put on our plate tonight, and then you say the magic words, well, it's going to hurt the kids, because of this, 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 then it should have been done two months ago, so we could see the difference if we, this could happen for them. But now, again, we're being our arms twisted, just like budget things and raises and going on steps, things like this, or where they turn to the board members and say, well, you're going to hurt the kids now, because it's last minute. Then maybe you, maybe we should be giving this information three months before, it has to come, if we have to look to the future of saving money for the district. So, I mean, I don't know why we have to vote on it tonight, we have two weeks if we could, if it's the pleasure of the board to ask the business minister to call them up and say, can you do this for $60,000? Just come back to save a little money. I, I mean, we don't have an onsite person from them, we don't get this, I mean, I just, I mean, it's just all the time, it's give, 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 and we can't cut nowhere, cut on contracts outside the district. And it comes back, and usually, a lot of places, they blame the employees' benefits every year, go up, go up. Well, every year, certain things go up, contracts and certain things I don't think should be that expensive. But you can't sit here and say yes to everything and then, because it's the last minute, it hurts our children. Then don't ask us to raise taxes next year, if we can cut it somewhere down the road, just like I said last year. I voted for it because it was going to hurt our kids, I was told of the budget. This is the same process, you know? Sooner or later, we have to stand up and be board members and try to help the taxpayers and the students. No, I don't care if you, you raise it, as long as the money goes back to students. If we cut that 10 and you get a different program in the summer, maybe you need an extra person at the theater camp, maybe you need something else in the classroom. I mean, but we keep giving it to companies, it doesn't go to the kids.
John, I know in, in other previous meetings, you've mentioned that contracts are going up and up.
Yes.
And I really wish you could be part of finance, because you would see that we are being efficient, there is pushback on contracts, things are being eliminated when we can, for example, technology. So I think to say that and make a blanket statement is, is false. We have to have contracts, we have to have an accounting firm, we have to have an attorney, we have to have an environmental engineer, so those are all things we have to have. We have to have someone to coordinate our transportation. Whoever it is, it's going to cost us something.
Exactly, but it doesn't have to come with the threat that it can't be changed. Too many, like, that's what's being told to us. If we don't do it, that's what's being told, and that doesn't give us time to fix the solution when, as a board, if we thought we could, that we think something's too much.
And, and ErtSpec's contract, current contract expires on July 1st, so they have to continue to do their jobs, whether that's doing special education routes over the summer until June 30th, and I believe our next meeting is June 27th. So, my recommendation is, yes, we do take this off the agenda tonight, because it's not going to have an effect, and, and to say it is, it's almost like a scare tactic. And, and we make sure we're getting the most cost-efficient service, in my opinion.
If I could just remind the board, just tonight, the professional services, we go through our annual solicitation, so these are things that have been advertised, requests for proposals/qualifications have been sent. It's been several months that we've done this, we've talked about it, I've had all the respondents in my office, and that is the process. So it's here tonight, I don't want the people in the audience to not understand that it is a multi-month process, that we've gone through publicly, keep these positions open, and notify the general public that not only do we need these services, that everybody was open to bid on it, all the respondents are listed there on the action, the support information, and they're all available, and again, that is something that I provided. My bottom line is, we'll take anything under consideration, but again, I must caution that these are things that we need, and I know people may misconstrue this, but I, I do really think that we do need to consider the impact on students with a multi-month process that has come to a point where we need to take action, so I think we need to take an action tonight, and I again would recommend that we consider this for a July 1 start.
But again, that's my problem. It's coming to me, today's the, this is the first time, as a board of a whole, of getting this advice of who to hire and its price. It might have been a multi-month thing for the process, but to get to telling us how much it's costing came this week to the board members, okay?
Mr. McNamara, we do function as a, as a, as a board with board committees.
A board of a whole.
And this was reviewed in committee. My understanding was that we had, we resolved this.
Oh, I wasn't told this, I'm not on that committee.
Well, Ms. Angley, in her finance report recommended all, finance said, that's, that's the job of the committee.
I understand, but I...
Just ask these questions, we debated it in finance.
Right, but we also left finance, and I had two specific questions and they were not answered. So, I want to make a motion tonight to keep the resolution as is, but remove item J ErtSpec until we receive all the information that I can...
Well, that's the first time I heard you say, you're saying, making recommendations. Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to amend the agenda item to remove item J for further discussion.
I'll second it, but I will feel...
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. My problem is, Tom, and I'd say, excuse me, Mr. President, my, my problem on a discussion is, it might have gone through the board, but no one has come to the rest of the board to send, and not that you sent that approving this, but before this, it wasn't said, this is what it will cost us, like when the RFQs went out, what we're looking for, what's our price we're looking for. Tonight, it's told to me, tonight or this weekend, we get our agendas on Friday, says it's going to be this much. And now, we get the threat tonight, well, if not, it's going to screw everything up come July 1st, all right? So, it's, it's the same process.
Mr. Moffett, nor, nor our superintendent said that, that was a comment Ms. Angley made.
Yeah, that was my comment.
I'm just saying, it's still...
This is, this is not a last-minute item, you know, it's, it's on the agenda every year.
And I complained also last year.
For the past three or four years.
We spoke about it every year.
And it went up.
We had answers every year.
It went up from like $35,000 the first time to second time, and then went up to now $70,000.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, if I may, just a, a point of order, the, the motion, there was a motion made to...
Oh, it's a submotion.
There was a motion made to amend the motion, this, this item has never been moved. So, my, my respectful request is that you rectify the procedure as follows. Someone make a motion and second it to make this motion, and then allow the motion to, basically amend it by removing item J, as I understand it. That's the, that's the appropriate way to do this. There's no motion to amend right now, there's no one's made the motion.
We hadn't made the motion on 10-21.
No, sir.
For 10-rem.
Yeah, so 10-21. We'd recommend it.
Motion.
So we got to go back and move, move 10-21?
Right, so if I may, so 10 dot 09, so what I'm saying is, someone needs to make a motion and second it, which I'm waiting to hear.
I think it's motion, motion 10-09.
We were...
Motion. Second. It's been moved by myself.
Is this, Vino, I'm sorry, is this with the removal of...
No, no.
No, I'm, I'm going to fix it in a second.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to go to you.
I, I thought we hadn't moved that in.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, so now there's a motion on the table. Now Mr. Biancomano is making a motion to remove item J, as I understand, is that right, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, so that motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Madigan, and so the board is now...
Voting on the removal of J.
Voting on whether or not to remove J from the motion that's on the floor.
Right. Yes. Mr. Moffett?
Coral? Ms. Angley?
No.
Mr. Biancomano?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Delara?
No.
Ms. Evans?
No.
Mr. Madigan?
Again, with the money, let's just spend it and then say, raise the taxes, so, yes.
Mr. McNamara?
No.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
These contracts come up at the same time every year, the RFPs and the RFQs happen at the same time every year, and I, I could understand maybe some of the newer members, but certainly some of the senior members know this, and if there is a question, I think it would be probably more productive to do it the day after or sooner before the RFPs go out than rather disrupt an incredibly important service to the, to this district. So now...
Not disrupting anything, highly likely. Again, with the scare tactics.
We have people hiring.
Please, please, please.
I don't have, I respect you.
Have it do with the...
How does your vote?
Have it do with the...
Ms. Sobolov?
I, listen, I heard.
What was your vote, Ms. Sobolov?
This is vote of council.
He needs to repeat your vote.
So, I said no to remove J.
Mr. Cuffell?
No.
Motion to amend fails.
Now can we call the vote on the main, the main motion?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
Yes on everything but letter J.
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mc, Mr. Madigan?
I'll vote no on the whole issue. It's easy that way, just like the board does.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Cuffell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now public comments on...
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Moffett, are there public comments on non-agenda or agenda items?
Yes, I have four speakers, first one listed is Ms. Patricia Waiters. Is that clock working?
Patricia Waiters, what, what was just displayed is like kind of mind-bothering, I understand about contracts and RFPs, but for you to say this same contract been on agenda every year, maybe there's somebody that will do it for cheaper, if this the same person, because people will come in our town, and I'm seeing it when I go to the freeholders, the regular city council, people will come in our town and take advantage of us. Hoboken is like a big-money cow to everybody, so when you put out these open, open, fair contracts, let's hope we get somebody that will do it cheaper, because I'm not saying no doubt about the hurt the kids, stuff like this hurt the kids. When you know you got the majority and you call a vote anywhere, you know it's going to be three to whatever, and it, it bothers me, it seems so disingenuine. So I hope in another five months, we get a board that will work together as a team, all together, not the majority versus the minority. Some of you saying no, and don't even know why you're saying no. You're saying no just because I was on the ticket with this individual. That's stopping Hoboken, because that's what hurt the kids. You absolutely right, John, they use the kids as a leverage, but that's what hurt the kids. When you sit up there and you act like kids, because you got to support the most majority to, that's happening in our whole town, it's not even a secret no more, from the zoning board, planning board, everybody's board, stop, because you hurt us at the end of the day. And with that being said, 10, 10, 10, one page, 19, hiring these contractors, we have a outstanding attorney here, please tell me this ain't going to break into his bank. I'm serious, I'd rather see him get the money, I'm, 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 maybe you can, let me finish, but do not touch this, this attorney here is outstanding, and deceive, one, two, three, four, five, six attorneys, they're getting rid of the hire, what's the matter with the attorney we have here? Thank you, thank you, I need, he need that. All right, you going to answer afterwards? Okay.
Our contract was renewed tonight, in fact, Mr. Biancomano, and I know it hurt to do it, but he almost, he came close to actually complimenting us on the reasonableness of our service. So we, we did okay tonight, we did okay.
But listen, I understand that, but I've seen too many times a not-to-exceed amount, and when attorney get into the lawsuit, they ask for a to exceed, and they amend that and then ask for more money, and it's been happening all over Hudson County, but you deserve it, whatever you ask for. So don't, Peter, don't be saying lower his fees. That's about it that I have for tonight, and thanks for the early childhood, that's what I came out here basically for, and enjoy the summer, and please, slow down, people watching this, kids is out, I was coming here, a guy, license plate HAU88A, I knew I was going to say it, New York tag, I'm, I'm waiting so the kids could cross the street, he came around me, that could have been three little kids hit by a car. So please, I encourage everybody to slow down, we only 14 blocks long, the kids is out for the summer, and everybody enjoy your summer. Thank you, and keep up the good work, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
If I could just, just address the issue, we did go out and do, we did the RFP months ago, and went out and notified up for these various professional services we needed, so that, that was something that we did go out and adhere to the public process, which would be RFQ slash RFP, which is a request or proposal for all those services you see on that respective action that you cited.
Even though it's a renewal, it happens to be a renewal, but it's been renewed to the successful bidder.
Correct.
Next speaker, please.
Ms. Melanie Takirian? Pretty good?
Hi, Melanie Takirian, 819 Washington Street, apartment 5. So a couple of things, first, I would love to actually agree with Pat on, everybody should really slow down when they're driving out there, because the kids are out, and whether that's summer or the school year, it would really be great if the people that are driving cars in Hoboken would please slow down and stop at stop signs fully and all that kind of stuff, so I completely agree, because that drives me absolutely crazy. So first, Dr. Johnson, thank you so much for the update on the process for pre-K and K placement, I think that that was a really thorough and informative update, and I think to the extent that that can be communicated broadly, you know, that's going to make a very big difference in terms of people's reactions and perceptions. I was a parent of a child that was wait-listed for pre-K3, and, you know, this is a number of years ago, but I can very clearly recall the panic that set in when you're not sure what's going to happen to your kid, and you have an expectation, and it was very difficult at that time to get any information, and so information and communication is key, so thank you. I think that that update was really informative, and I think that to the extent that that's made available to parents and incoming families, that they're really going to have a better understanding of the process, and to the extent that we control that process and don't control that process in terms of the funding here at the board level or by the administration, right, it's, it's really driven a lot by the state's requirements and some federal funding and all of that is, is pretty specific in terms of how that has to work, so I appreciate that update, thank you very much. And the update and understanding of how K kindergarten placement happens as well is really helpful to now, because again, people have different ideas about what that's happening, and without actually being able to see what the facts are, then the rumor mail runs rampant and misinformation travels so much faster than the facts, so, thanks for that. On my favorite topic, the Hoboken Theater Department, just a final announcement for the year, well, two things, one, I hope everybody came out and enjoyed Peter Pan, it was wonderful. I think the theater department continues to outdo itself every year, and just thrilled for the continued support for that program and for Ms. Miller. Just a reminder that this Friday is the year-end showcase at 6:00 PM at the high school, and that program... and that program will highlight, will be highlights of the activities that the Theater Department did this year, and I'm sure it'll be a wonderful show. So thanks so much to everyone, and thanks again to all of you for your service to our kids, both as the administration and the board throughout the year and for the coming year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next one I have, this is Chitali.
Chitali Kanda, second in Madison. First, I would like to thank you, Dr. Johnson, for all your hard work, passion, and countless hours for our district. You truly are amazing for us parents and children. Second, I'd like to thank you all. Specifically, I'd like to express my gratitude to Mark, Sharon, and Jen for your dedication. Irene, although your kids are older in high school and college, you still continue to show your support and attend our school functions, including Wallace. And lastly, Sheila, I'm so grateful for all your work for our kids, for the special needs group, and for all your public service work in Hoboken. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Courtney Wicks.
So I promise, this is only five minutes.
Do I have to time it? No.
You can. I time myself, so. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the board this evening. My name is Courtney Wicks, and I am a parent of a Hoboken middle school student. We have been a part of the Hoboken Public School family for over six years. I've been an active parent, serving in a lot of different capacities. Whatever was asked of me, I did it. The best part of our schools is our children, and I only want the best for them. My only objective tonight is to try to convince the board to consider creating a multicultural diversity and inclusion task force to help many of the children in our district realize and leverage their full potential. There are many dynamics to how racism in schools undermines student achievement. I think it is important to note that there are a few different types of racism. There's colorism, there's institutional, there's systemic, there's cultural, there's overt and covert, and there's internal racism. And that, and that one cannot exist without the presence of another. So for example, if I'm overtly racist and I become president of the United States, I can now leverage the tools of the executive office to try to institutionalize racism, let's say through a travel man, right? From the things I've seen, heard, read online, and have experienced in our community from government officials, administrators, other parents, teachers, and even some kids, I've grown both confused and frustrated by it all. And then I read this James Baldwin quote that said, "One of the paradoxes of education was that precisely at the point when you begin to develop a conscience, you must find yourself at war with society. Every narrative and discussion point to describe children of color in our education is automatically reduced to their circumstances: poverty, crime, gangs, beating the streets, standardized tests, graduation dropout rates, et cetera. Because of this, our children are defined by no more or no less than their statistics, as well as the stereotypes and tropes that follow. This impacts how children are viewed, treated, and taught throughout their academic career in the district. Our children's academic performance is often blamed on a lack of parental involvement, inability to behave, and/or due to apathy, laziness, and a lack of grit." These are things that are sad about our kids. Author Tanahezi Coats once said, "That racism is not merely a simplistic hate, it is broad sympathy for some and skepticism towards others." This is very much the dynamic that plagues our school culture. I don't know what exactly our district's statistics are, but this is precisely, sorry, this is precisely why a disproportionate amount of black and brown children are harshly penalized. Forty percent of black and brown students are expelled every year across the country. Seventy percent of in-school arrests, or students referred to law enforcement, are black and Latino. Black students are three and a half times more likely to be suspended from school, and it is why in our own district, we are, we have elementary schools that are segregated, why the experience for black and brown students are vastly different in middle and high school than their white counterparts, and why we've only had one African American serve on the school board since 1986. Additionally, our children are less likely to be identified as gifted and talented, more likely to be diagnosed with some kind of learning or behavioral classification that requires medication, constantly at risk of character assassination, and ultimately their potential marginalized or even shut down. Now, I know in the last year, the district has taken several measures to try to deal with some of the more systemic inequities throughout our district, whether it's instituting different approaches to discipline, lesson plan development and accountability, and desegregating some of our classrooms. But dealing with the institutional aspects of this issue is not enough. These policies shouldn't be set in a vacuum, and we can't just keep having one-off initiatives solve our problems here. Both Stanford and Columbia University have released research on how the elements of cultural institutional racism negatively impacts student achievement, and why a focus on diversity and inclusion is necessary. In spite of all the data and research, our teaching core isn't diversified enough, and cultural competence isn't a requirement to teach our kids. The gap of understanding continues to grow wider, sending the wrong messages and really hurting our children. Our children have to learn how to code-switch, they have to somehow cultivate advanced emotional intelligence to overcome microaggressions and unequal treatment, unequal treatment, and they have to learn how to politically strategize better than the adults in their school building just so they aren't misunderstood, seen as a threat, and/or marginalized. But this also impacts the interpersonal relationships between students across racial lines. White and more, white and more socio-economically advantaged students bear witness to the same horrible messaging, and in the worst-case scenario, normalizes the inequality, and in the best-case scenario, maybe activates a social justice advocate. A multicultural diversity and inclusion task force could bring people together across various ethnic, racial, and identity lines to help combat inequality, celebrate difference, promote intersectionality, and remove the culture of otherness in our schools. While I focus on black and brown children, it is not only about them, this is really about cherishing our diversity instead of demonizing it, and that is about everyone. We want our kids to break barriers, not brace for the ceiling. If our kids are going to take ownership of their education, they have to feel confident that they matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted, out of respect and courtesy, you were just talking here, I noticed a lot of people taking notes, and I think we will discuss this in committees and come back with a thoughtful response to your thoughtful comments tonight. We have another meeting in two weeks, so we'll do it at that point, because I know this is something we do care about. Irene, you wanted to say something?
This is something different, so.
Okay.
Than this. This is a different-
Anybody else?
I just want, are we closing now? Is that where we're going into the session?
Well, we're going to go into executive session.
Right, this was a different topic than what Ms. Wicks brought up, because I think you're right, I think it'd be interesting to come back in two weeks and have a response to that. I just, this was a completely different topic. I see Mr. Stasiak sitting there, he's not usually here with us, and I realized that this is the first meeting after Memorial Day weekend, so I just wanted to congratulate him publicly. I know that it was an amazing honor for the band to go to Washington, D.C. It was great to watch them live, and they looked awesome and sounded awesome. I just want to say thanks, and thanks to the kids in the band, so thank you.
All right, so the intention now is to go with, I'm sorry-
Before the public, could I say one thing? Before the public, I'd just like to say my condolences to the Gugan Melly family, that's been a longtime family that had a tragic loss. And rumors are that the person might have been texting, we should talk to our kids about texting while driving. I know I have older children that age, which panics me. You see people on the road going sideways, but they lost three people in their family this week, a longtime Hoboken family and a father from St. Francis Church, so my condolences to them.
We're very safe.
So, just to conclude and maybe bring back our comments to recap Ms. Wicks' comments regarding a multicultural diversity task force. I think that when we do have conversations over the next week and a half, I think it's interesting, it'll be interesting for all of us to wrap our head around a comprehensive task force and study, and how we can move forward with an initiative that is more comprehensive than one program, or one policy, or one, to look at it in a much more global way. So I do look forward to looking at the recommendation that was made in each of our committees, and then to put forward a thoughtful kind of conversation and board dialogue over the next couple of weeks and at our next meeting.
Fair enough.
Can I just, can I make a comment? I just wanted to say, in the last week, I've had the privilege of attending the Hispanic Culture Club and National Honor Society inductions, as well as the HEA award, I'm sorry, HEA Year End Dinner. And I was really honored to be invited to all of those and to celebrate the fantastic year that our students, our teachers, and our staff had had, have had. So thank you, and I look forward to graduation.
Okay, so the intention is we're going to go into executive session now to discuss some personnel issues that are we're allowed to do. We will be in there for, as I said, 20 minutes or more, not too long, but we're going to come back and simply close the meeting. There's going to be no voting on anything after that, other than the vote to close. So can I have a motion for executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right. All right, we're back from executive session. I need a motion to go back in the public session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to close?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Close.